Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at not five o'clock up there, but six o'clock on June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. First, next thing on the agenda, roll call by reporting secretary.
Can I just go around that room?
Just say everyone's here except, but I think everyone's here.
Everyone's here.
I don't know everyone that would be here.
Okay, if there's five, we're all here.
Okay.
Why don't we introduce ourselves so? Of course. That means gets to know us.
Yeah, there's two, well, I know Ted, but I don't.
Andrea Goldman, otherwise known as Andy. Nice to meet you.
I missed me last week, last month.
So glad you're here.
Thank you.
I'm really glad you're here.
I'm just Terry Carter. Nice to meet you, Abby.
Thank you.
Here's our chair.
Judy Pullman, I know you.
And Ryan Celestrum.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Opening statement by chair. People that are here have heard it a million times, so I'm gonna skip that. Considerations of any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda. You got anything?
Question.
Yes.
If something occurred while I wasn't here, I watched it on Chemo TV, Israel's reading this just to see it. Is there, is this appropriate time to bring something up to clarify, but it was already voted on?
Well, we're gonna briefly look at everything again, so I think that would be appropriate. Like later on, everything again.
Okay.
On item, item nine, C, we're gonna make a motion to send all the changes. And Martha discovered some errors today.
Okay.
Which Jared and I fixed and
Okay.
Fixed, it didn't need, it didn't affect a public hearing, which we were very happy to find out.
Sure.
But it had to do with the RC District paperwork and their reporting form to the trustees, so hopefully that will be correct on the website soon, but.
So this was about the, the, the alternate.
The alternate.
So.
Okay, well, we are gonna talk about that when we talk about the rules and procedures here.
Okay.
And membership, so.
Great.
That's a good time to bring that up. Thanks for asking.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay, next, we're gonna talk about approval of the minutes. First set of minutes were from April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Did anyone have any corrections in that set of minutes? We just couldn't approve them because we didn't have a forum of people that were here last time, so we had table all this stuff, so this. We probably have a March meeting here.
Yeah, that's March, not here. Oh, well, we would have approved it in April.
Oh, it is the last three. So I didn't warn that right then, did I? You sure we didn't already approve March? The last three were the organization, the meeting minutes, and then the main minutes.
You know what?
Those are the three.
Let's look at the April because if we approved March, it would have been in April.
There you go.
When we did reorganization. Approval of minutes of March twenty-one, we approved it, so.
Good. We're all set with March.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next one we're gonna look at is the reorg minutes. Does anyone have anything they wanna change about the reorg minutes? That they think should be changed? We are still revisiting the alternate thing, so. Well, we, I mean, we can, let me talk about that part. We all set with those?
Okay.
Okay. And the next set of minutes is regular April meeting minutes. Anyone have any corrections on that?
Well, you know, last month I saw a couple of typos, but it's been so long. If I don't have that, might not be that I circled. For a second.
Just looking really quickly, I see a space is needed on.
Yeah. You know, it was just typo, it wasn't real.
Seven B. Do you wanna look for those, or?
Nobody else sees them.
I wasn't here.
I'm, I'm looking really quickly. They were just like two or three typos. Yeah, I see a space is needed on seven V.
Right, seven C V. The adjustment for you.
Yeah. That's needed.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't anything major.
Okay. So when we move on to the main minutes. Abby, I just wanted to.
We have to make a motion to.
I was gonna do all of it at once.
Okay.
Would you vote on the eighteen?
Yeah.
Why don't we do them separately?
Okay, so we'll do them separately. All of those in, wait, we need a motion first.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three for reorganization and the regular meeting minutes of April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, moving on to May.
We wanna let them abstain.
What?
Abstain.
Any abstentions?
I guess if they weren't here.
Yeah, if you weren't here, you abstained.
April.
Abstain.
Okay. Okay, and the main minutes, Abby, the only thing I noticed personally is I'm not on the list of people that were here.
I'm just so upset when I was just writing my copy.
Let's add Terry.
Not sure I'm on there, you know?
Yeah, you were here too, right?
Yeah, doesn't matter.
Yeah, it matters. Yeah, we need to add Jared.
And last is J W D Y.
Thank you.
Yeah, my bad. My last name is spelled incorrectly. Under the attendance. It's S I L V E S T R I. Yep.
Hey, does anybody have any other corrections?
Did we get all the motions in?
I don't see them in here. That's why I wanna make sure we do them today. I don't see the motions. I read the same whole thing. Plus, we have a couple of corrections to make anyway, so.
I would make a motion maybe that we table these and, and watch the video and get the motions in. Prove these next month because it's really important that we have the motions in.
Yeah. Even though we need to make a couple of corrections today?
Well, we can make the corrections, but I, I do think we should.
Yeah, I don't see the motions here. I'm not sure we did, I'm gonna tell you the truth. I'm not sure we, I don't remember doing.
Making motions?
Yeah, I don't think we did. I think we were just like, okay, everybody okay with that? We moved on. I, I don't think we remember.
Oh, there is a motion on the, I see a motion.
Was, was. Was there a motion on the documents that sounded that's.
There's, there's a motion. Terry motion the proposed language pending checking the state statutes, Judy and Ryan secondly.
Well, that had to do with the alternate language. Yeah, I'm wondering about a motion on that.
Oh, there are motions, yep. Motion amended. Sorry, you, you're probably right with that.
I'm just wondering if there's a road. I wonder if there's motions on the paperwork that goes to the village trustees, is what I'm wondering.
Motion to adjourn the meeting. You didn't hear?
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Yeah, I think we need emotional paperwork today. Okay. Okay. All right, does any, are there any other worries or concerns about the minutes in, from May? And that wasn't a public hearing, just so you know, that was a regular meeting. No, no, that was public hearing.
It was.
And then a regular meeting. And then a regular meeting. Oh, yeah, so I was looking at the wrong one. So the motions for the paperwork, oh, no, I was looking at the right one. Okay. Can I, I'll just say a motion to accept these minutes from May sixteenth with the correction of fixing Ryan's last name and adding me.
And Jared.
And Jared. So moved. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I wasn't here, so I abstained.
Eight, seven, Eddie? Hey, moving on. That's a lot of stuff. Comments from citizens? We have one.
I have a comment, but it really relates to the agenda item seven.
Okay, so you wanna wait till then?
Well, it's the next thing. I guess if I don't comment, you gotta look right onto it. So my comments are the best, so when there's a comment here that I'd like to.
Okay. All right, so we'll let you hold your comment. Okay, so moving on to rules and procedures, we're still revisiting rules and procedures. Also because Eric pointed out something about our membership that our alternate language was stronger than our membership language as to that we wanted voters from Ludlow to be members of the planning commission. So this is the proposed language that I put right in the minutes here. Members of the commission shall be appointed by and any vacancy filled by the select board. The, the commission shall have five voting members. At least four members of the commission shall be citizens of Ludlow and Ludlow's shall be citizens on Ludlow's voting checklist. If not a citizen of Ludlow, the fifth member of the commission shall be a citizen of an abiding village or town. The members of the select board shall be non-voting ex officio members of the commission.
I'm sorry, what does the last sentence mean? Oh, the select board, excuse me. Excuse me, sorry. Got it.
In other words, they occasionally join us.
Got it.
Yeah. They can join us, but they can't vote. Or what do you think about this language? The commissioners first, and I'll ask our concerned citizen. No comments? Is there, are you okay with it generally?
Yep.
Jared, what's your comment?
All right, there goes. The bottom line is I don't think you can do that. It is why the planning board operates under the state statute. And there's certain leeway that the state gives for the planning board to make rules and regulations. But it has to follow that what they allow you to make the rules and regulations for. For example, you can't the state allows for three denied members, so you can't just decide in this meeting, you only want two, or you want fifteen, but you can't do that, but you can't the, so the planning department is an ex-official, you can't say they're, they're members. That's something you can't do. So the statute reads when it comes to members of the board, it's a five-member board, four have to be the majority have to be Ludlow. And then the other one is open. It's an appointed position. And that's, again, just another example. This board can't appoint people over the select board. So this board can't say, well, we don't want the select boards appointed. It's, you don't have that authority. So in this language I can try to add in here that is sort of defining who can and can't be. I think you're overstepping your authority on that. And a couple of reasons why I think you're doing that, A. These boards should always sort of work as a whole, but not necessarily as a protection of feelings about what is and is not allowed to happen in town. And make it more difficult. I think you're doing yourself a disservice and an hour of service to make these boards more difficult, even if you don't agree that someone who doesn't live there full-time can participate in these boards. That's fine. I, I do personally believe.
So, I, I'm sorry, just to, which parts of this are not to you, I'm not clear on what's not.
The language, the language that you have under membership.
Yeah, yeah, no, but which part of it?
You propose, this board is proposing changing part of the, it says the stat, okay, the statute reads five members.
Okay.
Majority have to be Ludlow residents.
Majority, okay.
When the board is proposing this stat, those members, same thing, the majority still has to be Ludlow residents, but the difference is they have to be registered voters, which there's no requirement to that. But the second part is really the, the important piece of it is that the board is proposing that the fifth member has to be someone from an abiding town only. That's not how the statute reads. Statute allows for a fifth number. It could be a member of town, it could be a member of the the select points. But they decide what they appoint. You can't change these rules to add them in because you just like the way it's set up. Just like you can't change the number, just like you can't change the date of the month. And what, it doesn't allow you to change the date.
I've got, I've got the statutes right here. Would you like me to read them?
Please.
They're pretty short. Forty-three, twenty-two, planning commission membership. A planning commission shall not have less than three nor more than nine voting members. All members must be compensated and reimbursed by the municipality for necessary and reasonable expenses. At least a majority of the members of a planning commission shall be residents of the municipality. The legislative body of a rural town or not more than two elected or appointed officials of an urban municipality who are chosen by the legislative body of the urban municipality shall be non-voting ex-officio members of a planning commission. If a municipality has an energy coordinator under chapter thirty-three, the energy coordinator may be a non-voting ex-officio member of the planning committee. Notwithstanding subsection A of this section, one, for appointed planning commission, the legislative body may change the number of members that may be appointed to the commission and for, and this is two, for an elected planning commission of municipality may vote at an annual or special meeting to change the number of members that may be elected to the commission. If the num, this is D, if the number of members on an appointed or elected planning commission is reduced, the members with the nearest expiration term of their office, well, doesn't really matter, shall serve until the expiration of their term, and then they, their office will terminate. So.
I don't hear anything in there unless we can't do that.
So in other words, the state statute is allowing for what you can change to prevent what she said. If it's not there, then you can't.
Well, we. I would actually disagree with that. I would disagree.
Resident where we want.
Yeah, first of all, it says at least a majority are residents, right? So we're not disagreeing with that. If we're not in contravention, then I disagree that we can't do something that is, we are, it is a majority are residents. We might be making it.
That part's not being argued. I'm not arguing that piece. I'm arguing the next piece.
Okay, which piece? That we're saying it's four and not a majority?
No. Oh, just the voting. Abiding village or town.
Okay.
Abiding town.
Oh, oh, I thought you were objecting to two things. Okay, that's why I was asking.
It's been in here. This is not.
Yeah, this has been here. This isn't something we've done.
The only thing we can control is the rules of procedure.
That is not good.
I mean, the select board.
That's something you guys just had. And you're discussing tonight that change.
I'd like to make that change, and I'll just send this along to Carl at the Vermont League of Citizens in towns. The lawyer that I've been consulting with about all these questions, just to make sure it's okay.
Sure.
Okay.
That would be good.
Can I entertain a motion for this?
Yeah, I would move to adopt this subject to getting approval that this is allowable as noted.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Got some nays over there?
Yeah.
They're thinking.
Well, just thinking down the road, being less restrictive, but this can change every year, right? Basically in the reorg.
We look at it every year.
We can look at it every year, so if that becomes an issue down the road, we can obviously change this, so. I, I vote, I vote yes, allowing that it is, it is legal.
Do we have any nays? Any abstentions? Well, I don't know, you couldn't abstain yet. You haven't yet abstained.
Yes.
You're an S, okay.
You actually might need to abstain.
Well, I was wondering what I should do.
I would think.
I know all the rules.
Okay. On to paper record on.
Nice, actually, personally, you didn't ask for comments.
Yes, yes, go ahead, Eric.
You're approving just this exact language that you have.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Residents have to be read the upper voted checklist. You said citizen going to board is checklist. You don't wanna check that. And then just the last one, so just the exact language I give that here.
Right.
That's what you do it. Okay. Yep. That will be charged. With, with, with approval from the BLTC.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Fair enough, thank you.
Or not necessarily, Carl, whoever answers your, your question when you, when you email them. Okay, paper of record, ran into a bit of a problem with the Vermont Journal and how restrictive that is between our meetings. I mean, I sent everything along the night of our meeting, but it didn't make it to the Vermont Journal in time, which is why we had to postpone it till July, so I'd like to reconsider keeping the Rutland Herald as our paper of record along with the Vermont Journal. Just because they don't have some strict deadlines, because the Vermont Journal only comes out once a once a month, not once a week, and there's some very strict deadlines about when your stuff has to be in and in between. The trustees meeting on the second Tuesday, or is it first Tuesday? First Tuesday, and our meeting on the third Tuesday. We have very little time to get anything in, you know, for public hearings, to get anything to the journal on time. What, how do people feel about that?
I, I don't remember. I don't.
We did have both.
The what, the Carol?
Yeah, we both, we, I just wanna put in both. That's what I'm saying.
Oh.
Yeah.
So you're covered.
Yeah.
Sure.
So that, you know, if it's a last minute thing, like.
You have to have one.
Right, so you make it to one.
Yeah, and it was two, but we changed it last month, Andy, and now I wanna change it back because we ran into that.
Got it.
Problem of not being able to get it in time.
Yeah. So it, so if I understand, it will go in the Rutland Herald, let's say, on time or within the required amount of time.
Yeah, fifteen days.
It will also appear on the Vermont Journal. It just won't make that, but because we made it in one, we have, we have qualified up with that confirmation on board.
Would somebody make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
I second, you want me to make same, same?
No, just move. Um, all those.
I second it.
You second it. Thank you, Andy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay. Um, Ms. Will Planning Grant. Allison, Martha, are they with us at this point? Either one of them?
Honey, I'm, I'm here.
Great.
Are do I have permission to share my screen?
Yes.
You're.
Please.
I'm not, I'm not in the zoom, no. I gotta get in the zoom, right? Yeah, obviously.
Oh, she does.
What?
No, she does.
No, she doesn't.
So she can share?
Okay, but I gotta get in there. I'm not in the zoom. I was trying to keep the survey open here. Well, Martha, I got the survey open. Is that what you're gonna share?
Um, can you see, can you see it anywhere?
Yeah.
So we're not on.
See it.
We're not in, you're not in Zoom, right?
I'm not in Zoom. I'm afraid to go into Zoom, but I'll try it. I'll try it.
But, but, so Martha, if we have opened the twenty-three community survey results, even though it's not coming from you, is that what you were gonna talk to?
Yes, I mean, I have it up on my screen, so.
Understood, but for, for, we're just not on Zoom at the moment, but we have it up. Does that work for you? And you can just tell us to go to the next page?
Okay, but I guess as long as, is there anyone else there who would wanna see it?
It's up on the screen.
It's on the projector.
Okay, great. All right, that's what I was trying to get at.
Allison.
I just wanted to, so just mark that. That was one of the first. Oh, who is it? Is it Allison?
So it's.
It's Martha.
Can I just, okay.
Can we just put the camera on the, on that, then they'll get it?
That's a good idea. Where the problems solved there, Andy? Thank you. Okay, Martha, we got you up here. Wait, I don't make it, sorry, I haven't used PowerPoint in a while. So I'll go to slideshow.
Yeah.
Okay, so there were two hundred and ninety-seven responses. This is broken out by, in here in the middle, who were the full-time residents and who were either non-residents or part-time, and then that's further broken out, the residents. How many were homeowners? How many were renters? And then to the left, breaking out the non-residents and part-time residents according to, you know, what their connection or interest in Ludlow is. For the residents, we did also ask them if they work in Ludlow or they own a business in Ludlow, but trying to capture that also in this pie was a little complicated, so we opted to just go with the homeowners and renters on this. If, you know, we do have raw data, if anyone wants to dig into any of this, if any of you are renters.
Absolutely. Yeah, I definitely would. Yep.
Yeah, okay. We can provide that.
Jared, Jared had a question if, and I just, can I just send this link to everybody? Will it work for everybody? This link you sent me?
I would think it would.
Okay. I'll send it to everybody this evening. Yeah, you wanna do that?
Should I go on, or?
Yes.
Okay.
There you go.
Oh, there we go.
It should be bigger. Okay.
It's just the arrow now, right?
Yeah, just your back and forth button. But we now have it up and it's bigger.
Oh, but we.
Okay.
I can actually read it. I was just gonna bring it up on.
So there's enough parking in Ludlow. There's quite a lot of disagreement with that statement, as you can see. Sixty-one percent. And over on the right, we broke it out as to what time of year people think there's not enough parking, and virtually everyone said winter, which is not a surprise. Just summer and fall, little problematic, but not too bad, and spring really doesn't seem to be a problem at all. And then below, it's just looking at it in a different way. How many people can either always or never find a space or somewhere in between, but it reflects the same issues that there's definitely a parking problem. Which is, I guess, you know, you already knew that really, but confirms what you knew. Um, does Ludlow need additional parking? Again, yes. There's not a big surprise there. The ranking of types of parking that people would support, we just did this by putting them in rank order and, you know, making the font size bigger according to how much that option was preferred. And again, the link that you all, I think, have to the survey itself provides more information, and then the raw data, you can dig into it even more if you want. This is about the idea of having a remote lot, providing public transportation to the village. If it was free, there's a little bit of support there, roughly twenty-five percent of people would use that. If you charge for it, hardly anyone would use it. Um, less than ten percent.
Are, are we able to separate out this data with who took the survey?
As far.
I'll send you that link. She sent me that link.
Yeah.
Probably down to.
Sure.
But this one would be interesting, because if you were a resident, you might say no about the remote, because you know, you don't need to park remotely.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's a little difficult to tease out.
Yeah, this is where you'd probably have to dig into the raw data.
I can start you guys on too.
Yeah.
Yeah, even beyond just the survey link, I think you'd need to.
Get the. Questions, sorry to interrupt. How, out of the two hundred and almost three hundred, what percentage was the town versus the village? Because I think that also helps understand this.
Yeah.
Do we know that easily?
Not sure if that's broken down.
All right, well, we'll look at the specific data, but I bet that has a lot to do with this too. Because if we live in the town, you could live, you know, miles and miles away.
Yeah.
Um. Or I think you wanted to.
Do you want the next chart, Martha, about how many people are there in your household?
Yeah, so what's, what's to me here was the fact that over twenty percent of the people said they. Don't need any parking spaces, I was surprised by that.
Oh. Really?
Yeah, things.
It's not like we have a subway system.
These two questions came right after each other, how many people are in your household? Um, and then how many parking spaces does your household need?
Maybe they're talking about how much more.
That's what I'm thinking, they might have interpreted it as incremental.
Yeah.
That's interesting, I wouldn't have thought of that, but that, reading this, that's exactly what I'm thinking.
It's possible that there was a misunderstanding, I mean. Maybe in the, between these two questions, we should have asked, how many vehicles does your household own, and then how many parking spaces does your household?
Interpreting that as more.
Hmm. So Abby, what did you say?
I was going to say, I interpreted it when I was taking the survey as. Um, I, if I lived in the village, I don't need a parking spot in town, because I can just walk to, into town to do. Whatever it is, when I used to live in the village, I would have said, no, I don't need a spot. But now that I live outside of the village, I, I need a spot. So that's, I, I think I, I would have voted. One, but if I lived in the village, I would have voted zero. So I think maybe the, yeah, the language wasn't perfect.
Yeah, true. It's a little wishy-washy. Didn't realize that while you set up the question.
Live and learn.
Ready for the next slide?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty high percentage of folks who think there's not enough. Housing options for people who want to live in the village. Now, folks would like.
Say not enough affordable housing options.
Can't remember if we included the word affordable. I think we just housing, but we'd have to look back at the, at the survey itself.
So it looks like what's in most is two, three-bedroom apartments.
Single-family homes is almost fifty percent.
Oh, yeah.
Studio and one-bedroom, single-family, multi-unit.
So the top three are single-family homes. Two-to-three-bedroom apartments and studio one-bedroom apartments.
And if you think about it, if you combine multi-unit apartment buildings with the two or three, with the studio one, but it's apartments.
Yeah.
It seems like. People are really open to apartment buildings.
Does seem that way. At least the people that are looking for housing are.
Right, which is, I think, very important, because we always talk about maintaining the character we can with apartment buildings. And I, but I think people are becoming more open to it than, than previously.
Yeah, me too. Yep, that's what this says, anyway. Did you have any comments on this one, Martha?
Um, no, I'm saying that you, you all have observed pretty much.
You think the Village of Ludlow should revise its zoning regulations to.
And these were, these three changes had more than a majority support for these changes. The biggest, of course, being requiring that new developments provide parking infrastructure for bikes. And making it easier to convert a single-family home to multifamily, that has quite a bit of support, and then. Uh, still more support than not, but smaller lot sizes for residential dwellings, so. Those are all things that you could. Feel fairly comfortable that there's support out there for making those changes.
That's good.
This one are the ones that there was less support for. Um. Apartment buildings, back to what you were just talking about on the other side. Construction of apartment buildings with twenty-five or more dwelling units. It's pretty close, but there were.
I think I got it.
There were more who disagreed with that than who agreed. Um. Increasing the maximum building height to allow four-story buildings, that also.
Yeah.
More people were against that than for it. Now, the state through S one hundred. Will allow, um, or requires you to allow an extra floor, about whatever your maximum height limit is currently. For an affordable housing project, you have to allow it to be one story higher. Unless there's. It won't meet, um, you know, public safety. Fire safety requirements. So even though this change isn't, isn't, wasn't supported. It may happen in some instances, anyway. Um. Reducing the number of parking spaces that must be provided for each dwelling unit was not very popular, and that is something that the state. Also just passed with S one hundred. So we are gonna go over those changes, um, right after this, but. They've preempted your authority on that.
So I'm interpreting NIMBY. We need more parking, but not in my, not, not in my backyard.
Yeah.
Interesting.
That happens all the time.
Oh, interesting.
What I thought is. Interesting about this one. Well. Is. This first question on the left, the answer's there, kind of like, what do you think about how the village? Does the village. Support affordable housing? And that the positive results are fairly small, but when, when you ask the person taking the survey. If they think that Ludlow should offer incentives for. Affordable housing, then you get a really strong response there, almost seventy percent. So just the difference there, I think. And whether people were interpreting Village of Ludlow to mean town government or. The other residents of the village, you know. Again, that's a little bit murky, and we, we, we won't know how they interpreted that, but I just thought the discrepancy between. What people think and what they think other people think was interesting.
Either interpretation, I think, follows with that very interesting observation. The feeling.
Yeah.
That is really, that's a very telling slide.
It really is. And that definitely says the Village of Ludlow offers this.
Right, it was village-focused, so. Again, pretty clear here, short-term. Rentals, you know, two-to-one, people feel that they have a negative effect. On the village. And then whether a registry should be established or not, most people felt that there should be a registry and that. Um, there should be a fee for registering for short-term rentals.
Oh, can you go back for a second?
Sure.
I wanted to see about the fee.
Yes.
You know, that's.
That is high.
Almost eighty percent.
Wow. Yeah.
And then we asked how they, people think the fee, the money raised through that fee should be used. Most people. It was, it was complicated to really get into the weeds on the rankings, so we just went with. How many people ranked housing as their first choice for the use of the funds? And then. People did rank, you know, second, third, and fourth, but trying to. Analyze that is complicated, so this is first choices. Was a different story with long-term rentals.
Oh, yeah.
Most people felt that. There shouldn't be, I mean, it wasn't, as you can see, it's not a huge difference, but.
But then they said you should charge. Well, fifty percent.
If you're going to have one, then, yes, charge a fee. But most people, or majority felt that there shouldn't be. A rental for long-term, a registry for long-term rentals.
Aren't there more regulations for long-term rental than there are for short-term?
Yeah, there's none.
There's none for short-term.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
But for long-term, there are things that.
That are a special.
Right. There, there are regulations for all rentals. You rent for more than one day, you're considered a business and fall under safe fire code, so. They're all the same regulations, so when I look at this, and you know, our number one is fire and health safety. Well, the difference between an STR and a long-term rental, there's no difference in health and fire safety. In my opinion, so this is, it's, it's interesting, I mean, it's. Honestly, what I, what I expected, but.
I wasn't surprised.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can you just, can we go back to this, so? So does everybody. Think that only the people who said yes, or did we design this, Martha, that. You only got to the second question if you answered yes to the first, or. It, like, um. Is it, if you answered yes, you then answered, oh, okay, so only amongst the people who said yes. Then only those, okay.
Okay, so.
Okay, now I understand it, okay, otherwise, okay.
Makes sense.
And this is where it would be interesting to see the breakdown of, of the respondents, right?
Yeah.
What bucket they fall into.
But.
Yep.
And I, I would definitely send you that. All the aggregates. I got the pedestrian infrastructure improvements.
Yeah, quite a lot of comments, um. In terms of. Where sidewalk improvements are needed, new side, where new sidewalks are needed, where crosswalks are needed, so there's a lot in there to consider. Um. And that's, you know, with the survey link itself, that has all those answers, all those suggestions, yeah. I didn't include it in this little brief. Presentation.
Okay.
There's a lot of. Stuff to dig into there. Um. There's obviously a lot of support for non-street parking spaces for use by people who have a disability. And a lot of support for bike racks. So that's a pretty inexpensive thing to consider doing in the short term. Um, could both include it in the zoning regulations. And, um, the town itself could consider maybe. Putting some bike racks here and there.
Hmm, definitely gotta send this to the trustees.
Yeah.
End of presentation.
And that's the end of that, yeah.
We have any comments about the survey results? We had a lot of comments along the way.
I think we did, but I'd love to dig in. A little deeper, like, maybe spend a whole meeting on that, and as we.
And maybe some sort of bullet points of action to take as a result.
Exactly, yeah, absolutely.
Like, where to go from here.
Yes.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, takeaways.
Yep.
Although, I, I do think sending this, even just this part. To the village trustees and the select board.
Yeah.
Would be, I think, incredibly helpful.
I'll do that tonight.
And I think the registry.
Should we send it, or should we present it to them? So we can get their reaction.
It's an idea, can't do it at the public hearing, because that's already been lodged, but.
No, but I mean, like, just ask for time on the agenda to present.
That's a good idea, that's a great idea.
We go to the public hearing, we could ask them. Okay, so, um, state housing bill, S one hundred.
More comments, so. I think that kind of gives us a point of reference with, so when we get through this, what our next priority should be, I think it should be the rental registry.
Yeah, me too.
And, um, you know, we seem to have good support for that, it's something that needs to be revisited and pushed, I mean, we spent, the town spent a good amount of money to. Collect that data from Granicus, so.
Agreed, I agree, I think that should be our priority.
Yep.
Agreed.
Okay, so we're moving on to. S one hundred.
So, yeah, um, as I mentioned during the presentation, um. One of the things that S one hundred does is. It says you can only require one parking space per residential unit. In areas that have water and sewer, and I think the whole village has water and sewer, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So. Um, the exception that they allow is if, if the development is more than a quarter mile from public parking. And rather than try to measure all that and figure out. Create a map or something of where you would need it, and where you would, you know, where you would have, could. Require more spaces and where you couldn't, probably just need to put some language in the zoning regulations that. That have that exception, and then. Consider it on a case-by-case basis. If you are more than a quarter mile, you can require one and a half spaces. Four dwellings that have two or more units, so.
One and a half spaces, a car, motorcycles.
One is a car.
Well, right, so for, for a two-unit building, you could require three.
Yeah, because one, it makes no sense.
If it's a three-unit building.
One day you drive down to it.
And here's your bike.
It does say rounded up to the nearest whole number in the, that's the language. I'm, I was trying to summarize, because the, the language is.
This is very useful, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I laid it out as changes for Ludlow particularly.
Yeah, I think I also sent you the broader summary.
Yeah, I have that, too.
So it's like four pages summarizing what's like fifty or sixty pages worth of. Um, regulations.
Everybody has that in their packet, too. That stuff.
And it also specifies that dwellings with four units or fewer. Are to be permitted use when you have water and sewer, like you do. Which you were contemplating anyway, so I don't think that's.
Yeah, and we're gonna take a look at that next time. Wanting your, your chart. About.
Duplex.
District.
Um, duplexes are allowed. With the same dimensional standards as single-unit dwellings. I still have a little bit of a question in my mind about exactly what they mean by same-dimensional standards, and whether that includes lot size. Or not. Um, so I'll hope, hopefully I'll get clarification on that before your next meeting. Um. In areas with water and sewer, once again. Um, the density. Is five units per acre, or one-fifth of an acre.
And right now we're at one-fourth, but the change that. We made with Jason last year was one-eighth, and. All of the village trustees said no to that, every single one of them, Ryan and I went to that meeting, and Andy was on, on the phone at that meeting, and Ted, you were there too. They all said no to that. For the one-eighth acre. So this would be, we'd go from quarter acre to fifth acre.
Yeah.
In the village.
Right. I think right now, you know, looking at all the changes that you've been making over the past couple of years. The Preservation District is the only one that's, I think it still says ten thousand square feet, so that would be, need to be adjusted. And you'd have to make a slight adjustment to frontage and/or depth, because if you. Multiply them together as they are now, it comes out to more than eight thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet, so. But it's a tiny adjustment. Um, if. If the development is an affordable housing development, then there's a forty percent increase in density. So then it's seven units per acre, or one-seventh of an acre. Per unit.
Can you repeat that? I'm right in here.
For affordable housing units. There's a forty percent increase in density. So while they're saying you have to allow five units. Per acre, if it's affordable, you have to allow seven units per acre.
Yeah, so one-eighth, one-seventh, one-seventh acre zoning.
And probably the best way to address that.
Allison and Martha, that. This is lovely language to put in there, but. Property in Ludlow is so valuable, who's gonna build affordable housing? You know, realistically, is that gonna happen because of this in Ludlow? You know, wanna be a Debbie Downer, but. Trying to live in reality here.
It depends on the incentives.
Yeah.
It depends on the incentives.
As the density rises, it makes it more.
I hope it works, and I really do hope it works.
Instead of slightly being able to, four or five units, you can do seven or eight. Different, different deal, yeah, go ahead.
Last week, we, um, you know, I, I mean, I think that we need to encourage this.
Of course we do, yeah.
Well, but through the, the. The zone, the permits, I think we need, you have a new permit. You need a certain amount of, you know, we need to. You need a certain amount of, you know, we need to enforce that. We need to maybe expand that.
Yeah, we put that eight years ago.
Maybe we need to expand what that means.
Every fit's development has to be affordable housing.
You know, so I mean, as we're okaying hotels and stuff, which we also need, I think that there's there's ways for us to, it's carrot and stick.
Hmm, great. Eric, you had a comment?
I was just gonna tell what I meant. He said, no, we're gonna do it. Um. I would do it.
That's great.
I just I just four acres in the village to do such a thing. But again, it all affordable, you won't have affordable laws without density. So working through all this, you know, I'm not sure what I can actually do on this property.
Well, I'm really glad to hear that.
Makes sense.
I guess I shouldn't be so negative about it.
I would love to build apartments for the folks in town. But obviously, A, it has to make financial sense. No one's gonna take a loss on it.
That's what I'm saying. That's that's the given answer.
How you make sense with affordable density?
Right, so this increases it by forty percent.
So it looks like we got a whole new section then.
And we can, you know, we can do the it's with tax, property taxes. There's various ways to
It looks like the public agrees too.
Yeah.
Added emergency shelter to limitations sections.
Yeah, um, yes, emergency shelters are added to that list that includes schools and churches and, um, you know, facilities like that, that you you're limited in what and how you can regulate those. And what they mean by emergency shelter is a homeless shelter. So.
Okay. Hey, are we all set with our S one hundred changes, Martha?
That's that. That's it in a nutshell. And we, Ally and I were talking about, um, you know, providing actual language for these for your next meeting. And also hopefully going over site plan and administrative review and conditional use and definitions and just making sure that everything is consistent.
Oh, yeah, I want to add to this too, what you said about fifth acre zoning. And that's in the village RC and the village R.
It would be wherever there is um water and sewer. If you look at at the longer explanation that I sent about changes, um, you can, I think there's more detail in there.
Yeah, I can open that up. Let's save this one first. That's this one.
Density.
And residential areas served by municipal water, sewage, and lot size residential uses shall be one fifth of an acre or less. Or less.
Or less than a fifth of an acre, like I mean, it can be a six or an eighth, or it just can't be. You can't require a lot that's bigger than fifths of an acre.
Right.
So all this goes into effect December first, twenty twenty four. Which gives us time to.
Yeah, we probably wouldn't send any changes to the village trustees until the end of the grant in January.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you go through the longer document, there are different effective dates for some of the things like the the duplex and multi-unit dwelling.
Yes.
And that was July one, twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
Probably need to get the dates for all these and make sure that we work through.
Does our zoning have to change before July first for this, or does this just happen?
You know, the state law will just supersede your your zoning.
As of July first. Whoa, without duplexes and multi-unit dwellings. Local, right, regulations. Let's see if there's any more Julys. These are all Decembers. Emergency shelters, so homeless shelters. And there's another July first, area served by municipal sewer and water.
That has to do with act two fifty, um, the act two fifty definition, um, that made it so it was basically the five, five, ten rule. You could only build ten units within five miles within five years, and they temporarily changed that to twenty five.
Wow.
Um, and they also have said that, um, I think I got the language in here. Basically, if you're converting a a single family home to a multi-unit dwelling, that counts as one. Not like, say, if you're con- converting a single family to four units, that wouldn't count as four for act two fifty. Uh, jurisdiction purposes, it would come as one. But again, it's temporary, for now, anyway.
Any other July first changes, preparation of bylaws, amendments, or agreements?
Yeah, when you do your reports and things like that, you have to address these housing issues.
Decisions go into effect July first. Definition of development. Master plan permits. Does anybody have any questions for Martha or clarifications?
It was very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Martha. Thank you for breaking it down to the town. I love that. That really helps.
Yeah, maybe a few other things in the larger document that do apply to Ludlow. I just wanted to hit the highlights for you.
Thanks for doing that.
Sure. You're welcome.
Okay, I guess we're gonna move on to our changes and additions to the trustees, everything that's gonna be talked about at their, at our public hearing with them. How many people can attend that public hearing on July eleventh? Okay, six. I need to warn it. I want to make sure I warn it for everybody.
Well, Terry, I had sent you a few things kind of at the last minute. I don't know if you saw those.
When I get home, Martha. Six o'clock, um, yep. It had been scheduled for July fourth, and so they changed it their last meeting.
So is this village trustees or village trustees, public hearing? On, you know, all this stuff we're sending them.
I believe I can make it, but if not, it sounds like you have.
Okay, I will definitely warn it then because it'll be a joint meeting if there's three or four of us there. There's three of us there. Okay, so we're moving on to motion to send all changes, additions to the trustees. I want to um, just go over some housekeeping stuff with you guys that Martha, Jared and I looked over everything and obviously didn't see everything that we should have seen, and Martha went through everything with a fine tooth comb and um, alerted us to certain um, documents that needed fixing. One was our there was nothing on employee housing and um, the definitions. So I'd understand a motion to send that along the way it is to the village trustees.
I had suggested a change in the language, but you know, if you're not comfortable with it.
Oh, was it the bathroom part?
Yeah, and there's also a typo in D.
Okay, let's let's split up then. Employee housing definitions. Okay, so your, what was your bathroom on? That's E on ours. We had the maximum amount of occupants per three quarter or full bathroom cannot be greater than eight. What was your language?
Let me see if I can find that.
Put on both side by side and decide which one we want. Yours was more specific. Oh, that was in the, I think you guys have it in there. I think I asked Jared to switch it out. It's just the conversions and changes of use.
I see we have different phones.
Oh, let's see, where did it go?
Did you find it?
I think I've got it. Yeah, so I was proposing instead of what you have there, there shall be at least one bathroom, including a sink, toilet, and bathtub or shower for every eight persons occupying a residential structure that is being used for employee housing.
Can you repeat that? I can't finish that. There shall be one bathroom. That's what I got.
There shall be at least one bathroom, including a sink, toilet, and shower. I got that far.
And bathtub or shower for every eight persons occupying a residential structure that is being used for employee housing. The way it was worded, it kind of sounded to be like you can only have eight people in the bathroom at this at one time.
Oh, yeah, I guess we gotta fix that.
We could limit that also.
Okay, let's, I'm trying to get it right. There shall be at least one bathroom, including a sink, toilet, and bathtub slash shower for every eight persons, people.
Which which. For every eight persons occupying a residential structure?
That sounds.
That is being used for employee housing.
Still occupying, right? A residential structure that is being used for. Thank you, Abby. Used for employee housing. I did have some feedback from Steve Myers that he thought that was a lot of people for bathroom. Which I kind of like, so. You want what?
One bathroom for every four bedrooms.
That is a lot of people.
That's a lot of people. I mean, we're seven in my family. We have two bathrooms, and we're always waiting. Plus, all these people, if they're employees of Vail, they're probably all getting ready exactly at the same time. Just not know if we should reconsider that number eight.
It essentially mirrors the rental housing regulations.
Oh, that's why we did it. I knew there was a reason why we did it.
Yeah.
And it's not impossible. It's not ideal, but.
And it's minimum.
And it is, and it is, it's a minimum standard, and it's a standard, which they don't have now.
Yeah. Does everybody like the better newer language from Martha?
Definitely.
Have to leave the old one. Okay, and where's the era in D?
In D, um, the second part of that, it says the minimum square footage for a double double occupancy bedroom, and will is misspelled.
Oh, yeah, I did catch that. Jared and I caught that.
I may have let it slide now, but.
No, right there.
Yeah, he.
And it would be a little stronger if you changed changed it to shell, both of those wills.
Okay, let's do that. Plus that zoning language.
I have a a comment on the preceding page where it has permitted uses and conditional uses under the village RC district. Did anybody notice that one is blank for permitted and conditionally?
Oh, yeah, we get, we're gonna look at that one next.
Oh, okay.
Well, not maybe not next, but.
Maybe my papers are out of here.
We caught things. Martha caught things on that one too.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so.
Can we stay on employee, can I, on employee housing, um, in the, I guess it was the definition. Um, and I know I saw the conversation about leased or controlled. I think it should be leased controlled or facilitated.
Least controlled or facilitated?
I think you put both. Because, and I'm not even sure if that gets it to me, the facilitated, so I'm thinking about the situation of the employee does not either, you know, doesn't own it. Somebody else buys it for the purpose of being employee. You know, and maybe we first of all just put in that sentence, but I would also then put in, there was a a concern expressed by someone that uh, when we originally talked about this, well, if I just introduce, you know, if I give you a list of landlords, is that facilitating? And the answer is, we don't mean for that to be. Um, so but I I think that we should add that, um, you know.
Owned leased controlled or facilitated?
Yeah, but I think we should also possibly add the sentence that if you know, if something is if if somebody's owns a property that's intended to be used for employee housing, except that it's not owned by the employer, it still satisfies.
We're trying to get at that.
I think that might get it.
To put in that sentence?
Yeah, what do other people think?
I want to get at that. I was hoping facilitated, got at that.
Comments from citizens.
Yeah, citizens getting comments about that.
Now we want to.
In the definition of employee housing, we're trying to make sure one of those verbs gets at why, like someone from Brooklyn is running the Audrey Rose and turn employees in Vail. Are we getting at that person with the language that we have? Owned leased controlled or facilitated?
I think you're running into some sticky areas. With a situation like that, more than likely, they're master leasing it to Vail.
So Vail is involved in the lease.
Yeah, so they're in control of it. They're facilitating it. I'm not sure how you would control it. They're running it and they rent only to employees. It's employees living there. But they they're allowed to do that as a, in any case.
Yeah.
Right. No, but and that's why it's it's but you actually said something interesting. So it could be owned leased, subleased, first of all, would take care of that.
Subleased words, because, you know, that's hardly get around a lot of it in some towns that have regulations, the short term regulations. You sublease it to a company who does the short.
Right, right. This would be very helpful.
So are you gonna agree to add subleased and controlled?
I like sublease. That makes a lot of sense, actually.
Yeah, I think it's something we've left out.
Because otherwise people could circumvent.
Right.
Yeah, not.
Yep.
You think that gets at that handy, so we don't need that extra sentence?
It helps.
Yeah.
I didn't, I wasn't aware of that arrangement. That certainly helps.
Martha, what do you think?
Potential arrangement.
We're talking about adding to an employee housing definition, housing that is owned leased, subleased, controlled, or facilitated.
Yeah, that's more comprehensive than what you have.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Am I allowed to ask our audience a question?
Yeah.
Do we have someone from Vail here?
Yes, we do.
In courage of employees. Do we get your thoughts on this? Since we're not, and we're not picking on Vail. It's, I hear it a lot also. Um, but it's just a common employer using housing, um, so it comes up a lot.
Um, I'm just here to listen today, but I'm not gonna comment, but.
Okay. That's fair.
I think your difficulty is gonna come in is that this becomes, you know, if a large employer town feels like this is too restrictive, then maybe it easily just say, hey, owner of the of the Rose and, I think it's called over there. You know, can you just set aside all these rules for us and we'll send everybody to you?
Well, see, and and that's why I feel like still an extra sentence is sort of needed.
What's your sentence again?
Let's put it in there and see how it looks. Something to the effect of, um, if housing, um, well, I I guess it's more if if none of the above are conditions, but uh, a building is used for the same purpose. For the purpose, you know, it's really the primary purpose of employee housing for a given for a given employer. So it's not like, like.
Can I say one thing? I I think it's unlikely. It'll be difficult, obviously, to cover any situation, but I think it would be unlikely in that case. Because with Vail, master leases, they charge the folks, you know, they make money off that. They charge the people that piece of it.
Gotta take another paycheck before.
Yeah, so it would be unlikely that you know, a large employer is gonna still say, hey, everyone go over to this end, the whole of Limsley, because they want to get a piece of that.
Well, let's add that. Let's add, or if an employer is receiving any portion of rent or fees due to this housing, that's employee housing.
I like that.
That's great, that's that's great.
If an employer.
Uh, is receiving some remuneration. Yes, no?
You know, just to play both sides of it, you obviously don't want to make it overly restrictive because you want houses.
But wait, but so the intent is, the intent here is actually not to make it restrictive, but to make sure that employee housing by whomever are good neighbors, but also that it's safe and healthy. by whomever are good neighbors, but also that it's safe and healthy for the people in it. Because right now, we're observing for whomever, it's not occurring. Um.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, wait, so.
Can you say that sentence again?
Sure. So, receiving any, um, remuneration for the.
How do you say, how do you spell renumer?
We, it's remuner.
Remuner?
Remuner, remuner, renumer.
Your car's not working.
You went there. Thank you. E R H N. Um.
Oh, cleared it up.
I would say.
If an employee is receiving any remuneration from the housing, that is considered to be employee housing.
Uh, well, it's remunerated from the housing, um, where they are housed is considered, um, is to be considered employee housing for the purposes of this definition.
If an employee is receiving any remuneration from the housing.
That's okay, you're saying it, you're saying it wrong, but you wrote it right.
Employer is receiving any remuneration from the housing.
From the housing, um, of its employees by an independent.
This is gonna be a whole chapter.
Well, we don't even have to say that. Then it's, then you forget the, by an independent, um, of employees, um, then such housing is considered employee housing. Even if they don't make the prior definition. Or you could just say in addition, you, you don't have to say the next part. You could just say, yeah, is considered to be employee housing for, yes. And then in there, say in addition, yeah, exactly where your cursor is, right? So that if you didn't meet that, um, it's still considered.
Mm-hmm. I'm sure there's something we haven't covered, but.
I'm for it too.
So a lot of this is coming from sort of the bigger properties that, that are leased. Uh, this is a zoning discussion, it's gonna be a conditional use, you know, running though. In the scenario where a company just rents, say, a two-family or a single condo. You know, for example, a few years ago, I leased, um, I gave all my stuff to them out there. But they're just single condos all over that and they're not like one big structure that is thirty people. Would that, would they or I have had to come in, in changes only on that to employee housing? Because there was employees living there controlled by an employer?
Well, yeah, because what I'm gonna talk about a little later, the Village RC changes, we didn't need to put employee housing in there. Employee housing isn't a separate kind of housing. It can occur in every other kind of housing, like duplexes, triplexes, multiplexes, apartment buildings, you know, it can occur in all these other different types of housing. So there's no separate employee housing that you stick into your list of housing, which we did last time in error.
Okay. Yeah, just trying to think it all through.
So is it a conditional use for employee housing or it's not?
It's not, not actually building at all.
So we're just saying, if you meet this, you have the standard.
Yeah, if you meet this description, you have the standard. Yeah.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Martha, are you okay with adding that sentence? And, uh, you know, did you hear all that?
I'm not sure I got the whole sentence, um.
Yeah, I got it. In, in addition, if an employer is receiving any numerate, remuneration from the housing of its employees, then such housing is considered to be employee housing.
Um.
Just trying to get every case scenario here.
Yeah.
I think we got most. We're okay?
Yeah. Yeah, I.
I'll entertain a motion of sending this along to the section two twenty, wait, section five twenty point fifteen on employee housing. And our definitions, well, the definitions are, you know, this is gonna be a convoluted motion because they're in different sections.
Sorry. I move to submit, uh, the, uh, section five twenty point one five as we just amended it and the definition as amended for employee housing, uh, for to the village trustees.
Oh, we also need to cover rooming, boarding house and in transient.
Okay.
In that motion.
No, no, move that next.
Okay. Probably move that next.
Well, yeah, just do it as a separate motion.
Okay. I'll second that. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so moving on to the other definitions, rooming, boarding house and in transient. Some of these are new definitions and some are, are changes.
Ultimately, be, you know, before this becomes, uh, your zoning regulations, if you haven't already had your town attorney look at it, you, you probably should. I mean, that's always the case with zoning regulations, but, um, you're, you're being trailblazers here to some extent, so.
Yeah, he, he charges money, so I haven't told to send it to the, we go cities and towns.
I think at some point. You send it to the town lawyer.
That doesn't cost money. We need lawyers.
Yeah. Stepped on about that. That's why I'm really into do that.
Was it a prior regime?
I'll be happy to.
Prior, no, it was zoning administrator.
Recently?
No.
No, well, it's a prior.
Yeah, the zoning administrator said, you know, you don't do that. It costs money.
Um, I think we, uh, we, we, uh, process of the select.
It was just, okay, so now we're gonna take a look at what we have for rooming, boarding house and in transient. And that motion would look like, um, five twenty point fifteen, article seven, definitions revised and added, including rooming, boarding house and in transient. If we want to tackle that motion? Five twenty point fifteen.
No.
Yeah.
It's just article seven. Five twenty point fifteen is the employee housing.
Okay, so just article seven.
Definitions, some new and some revised were added to article seven.
Okay.
You got a dandy or you?
Sure, I'll try. Uh, I move to, uh, uh, propose uh, new or change definitions for article seven covering rooming, boarding house, bed and breakfast in short term and transient.
You have better br- better breakfast in there?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have it. Okay, um, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any sense? Ted, you bravo rouser over there. Okay, moving on to um, article four, section four thirty, adding rooming, boarding house to the Village RC's permitted uses. Okay, so this was a quagmire. Because Martha, excellent catch, and the one I originally sent out had changes of use up in permitted uses, which I have no idea why that was in there. And it was also in one that Allison sent me. I saw that this morning, but it was also in that one too. Where it said changes of use up in the permitted section and we don't want, we don't want that to be there.
Do we have?
Yeah, article, so the one that says Village RC.
Oh, yeah, okay, got it.
So see where it says changes of use up in permitted? That cannot stay there.
Probably what, I mean, what I would suggest is that you just say that you want to, um, add rooming and boarding houses as a permitted use to the Village RC district and no other changes at this. Rather than put, putting out that document that, that had a lot of changes.
Yeah. And also I mentioned before, we added employee housing to permitted uses and that's not a type of housing, which none of us understood at the last meeting. But it exists in other housing. Martha, can you repeat that motion? Would somebody move her motion along?
To add rooming, boarding house as a permitted use in the Village RC district and to make no other changes to that district at this time.
And not even send along the list. Because we're gonna be looking at that list intensively next month as we decide what to leave in permitted and what to leave in administrative review and what to leave in conditional.
Right. I mean, well, you can take, I mean, you can take the existing zoning regulations and just add, there are currently eight permitted uses. You can just add a ninth boarding house and leave everything else the same.
Okay, so just send along their permitted uses section to put on the town website.
From the current regulations.
Time. Okay.
I'm confused.
All right.
I am confused. What is going on here?
Okay, what's going on here is.
Serious.
The Village RC.
Twelve permitted uses and you just said there's eight.
Exactly.
So.
So Martha, let's look at our list and see which ones you have.
Uh, this isn't making sense.
This is what it should say. Permitted uses should be single unit dwelling, number one, number two, two unit dwelling. Number three, accessory user building. Number four, home occupations. Number five, home childcare. Number six, accessory apartment. Number seven, governmental recreation area. Number eight, additions or alterations. And number nine would be rooming and boarding house. Is that what you have, Martha?
What I, uh, what's been downloaded from.
Yeah, mine, mine was totally outdated. The one I gave, sent you guys. Sorry about.
Oh, okay, I mean, this is right.
Does, did either of yours have permit, did either of yours have administrative review? Because I didn't even have that. Uh, which was something that hasn't been approved yet, but was changed.
This is not, I'm taking a picture of this.
We can't move on this without seeing what's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, it's totally different. Sorry. All right, so let me get it up here so you guys can see it. Okay.
The only difference I had, Terry, was for number eight, what I have is upgrading and you said something else.
Additions and something, additions and alterations. So you had upgrading there?
Yeah.
I have for that first.
I took this from, we have your zoning regulations on Mark's website and they're from August seventh, twenty eighteen.
Okay, here's what I have here. So.
Yeah, that's what we have. What you just read to us.
Yeah, because I have the changes and she has it without the changes that we made with Jason. That's why I have something different from what they have. So how is this different from that?
This is, this is what I go by now. This is what's on the town website. These are our current regulations. And this is also, um.
That's the, that's the problem is I have every, every change that hasn't been okayed yet. So I'm gonna change this.
And change your uses.
So is this going to the trustees?
Only this part. The only thing we're agreeing on is this part right here.
Okay.
And all the changes we made with Jason over the last year and a half, we will work on those next month. And they won't be part of the public hearing. The only thing we're sending to them is adding rooming, boarding house to the pri- permitted uses. That's the only thing we're agreeing to right now.
Got it.
Okay. Are you guys okay with that? That's all we're agreeing to.
Okay.
Because we just made so many changes, right?
Yeah, well, that's why I said.
Oh, I should have just saved the original version somewhere. Well, I'll fix this. Took a picture of it, so I'll fix this at home. So I, the motion just needs to look at like adding rooming and boarding house to the permitted uses of the Village RC district.
Can I, can I have that back?
What did I?
The paper that you just gave.
Oh, I gave it to Jared.
I'll make the motion off of that.
Okay.
Where is it?
Family kind of brain. Okay, so it's section four thirty.
We just RC there.
Can you find it quickly? Oh, RC.
And we're adding rooming house.
Rooming, boarding house. Oh, wait, boarding, rooming house, we read on, we're putting it in alphabetical order. It's, it's written in different places.
Boarding.
In different orders, so Jared and I agreed, we put it in alphabetical order so you can get confused about it.
So, and I'm just gonna ask, what, what are all these that we're looking at where there are more? What exactly is that? Where did that come from?
It was proposed before, but we're going to revisit it before sending it up.
Yeah.
Like, right?
It was changes we made with Jason over the last year and a half, but they haven't been approved by the trustees. So we're going with the one that's actually on the website and just adding rooming and boarding house to it. Not making any other changes at this time.
Hey. I will make a motion to add to section four thirty, Village RC District permitted uses. Rooming, I'm sorry, boarding, rooming house.
I second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post-opposition? Thank you, Jared. Okay.
Just had to be clear on that, sorry.
No, no, I'm glad you're clear on it. But I've been muddled about it all day. We've been working on it. Good. All right, so next we have okay, we haven't done conversions and changes of use. So I said I had an older version of that and Martha sent around a parlor, correct version. And Jared took out the older version I said to give you guys and put in the corrected version that Martha sent this morning. So the old version referred to, uh, conversions and changes of use.
Mm-hmm.
It referred to a section that we created with Jason, which hasn't happened yet. Hasn't happened through the village trustees. So that's why she had to clarify that and why we have a different version of that in our packets of the conversions and changes of use. And the last month, I did warn that section in our regular meeting, so we couldn't act on it. It was just Ryan and Judy and I. So I thought, since we have to revisit this anyway, we could maybe get this done and have done this tonight. And it is actually already on the public hearing notice that we're gonna, you know, work on evidence and say exactly what it says, so.
And it is the one that's in the package.
It's like section four twenty point fifteen fourteen, conversions and changes of use.
What it, what we did was we removed E. Which said a conversion or change from a conditional use to a different conditional use can be approved under administrative review, provided that all applicable standards can be met. And it refers to section two fifty-five, which hasn't been adopted yet. So at least for now, just remove that. And then in section D above, we added a conversion or change from a permitted use to a conditional use or from a conditional use to a different conditional use may be approved by the development review board subject to conditional use review under section two sixty.
So now all the sections referred to I hear actually exist and they are changes we've made over the last year and a half.
And then, you know, in six, it's when you're making all your final changes. If you do adopt section two fifty-five, then you can put E back in there.
Yeah, we gotta remember to do that. Knowing you, Martha, you'll keep us up on that.
I'll try.
She's good with the fine tuning, I'll tell you. Because Jared and I looked this stuff over several times. We're sending it back and forth and we met in his office and worked on it and didn't get those little blunders until Martha pointed them out. Our people with this language, I know Ryan last time was, had a little bit of concern about the subdivided law part B one. But I'm not sure if this document is a place to, to work on that. That's a longer conversation. And that can happen later on in the grant.
So Martha, could you read that definition again?
Please. Uh, which definition?
The one that you just read about a conversion or change.
You mean D?
D, yeah.
Five twenty point one four D, a conversion or change from a permitted use to a conditional use or from a conditional use to a different conditional use may be approved by the development. May be approved by the development review board subject to conditional use review under section two sixty.
Okay. So there was a clause in there that's not on this paper.
Right, I added that, that second or from a conditional use to a different conditional use. To cover the situation that you're, um, crossing out in, in E. That was going to be subject to administrative review, but since you're eliminating that, someone's got to be able to.
You guys don't know what she's talking about because the original one she sent us had that part in it, but crossed out and we took out the parts that were crossed out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, I see that.
Yeah.
This is the new E.
Okay, no, it's just I didn't have that clause in there, so that's why I was wondering, it's just.
Okay. And all the correct ones will be on the website after this, I'm gonna send all my corrections along to Becky, cause Diane's on vacation.
I, I just wanted to know why.
Well, the ones on the website, um, I'm accustomed to, you know, seeing changes redlined. Is, is stuff redlined as, so that people can see what's being changed versus reading a new. Which just creates whole issues.
It will be to the village trustees when they get everything, everything will be redlined, so they see, they can find all the changes.
Why not do that on the website? Why not make it easier for everyone? Since we have to do it anyway, if we're going to be doing it anyway.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about putting red lines on the website, though. I don't know how that looks.
When it looks.
I think they want it to look more professional, I mean, that's just.
That is professional.
Yeah.
To me, that is professional.
I mean, that's why the village trustees will see all the red lines, but I'm not sure that. The website is a place for people to do that, because, I mean, how can you explain all of that with the red lines, why that was changed and. It caused a lot of confusion and. Cause they don't know about all the changes we've made, you know, over the last year and a half, and I think it would just cause a lot of confusion. Over, you know, why is this not here anymore and. What's this section about?
So, I apologize, what are we putting on the website? Are we putting language?
That's what I'm here, yeah.
Right, so, but this is less meaningful. I guess that's my point, if we're doing this for the public. Which is, is the purpose, right?
No, I hear what you're saying.
Then I think it. I understand, it's no different than them getting this and not knowing why it looks different. Right, I mean, and it's forcing someone to read everything, not knowing what's new or what's not. So I, I would think, and you can, red lines are easy, because you just take an original word doc and you. Compare it to a new word doc and it creates a red line. It's gonna go in and clean stuff up, but, um. You know, I, I just feel like. The purpose is for people to be aware, so why not make it.
I think that this is a new document, it's not an amended document, it's something new, so it's kind of like you're just showing your.
Well, then it should show all.
Stakes as you're going along, you know what I mean? We're trying to propose this for, this is new. This is something new.
Right, so you're saying this whole section did not exist?
Right.
Oh, okay, so then it's gonna all be redlined. Right, so when, when.
We wanted, we want to say here's the new section, this is what it looks like.
Helpful, is it, like on here, it says like, um.
I mean, would you send somebody all your edits before, you know, when you're, in your finished document, you send them all the edits that you did along the way?
No, 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 we, we, uh, um, the, uh, the. To approves, to approve changes, to know what changes are, yes, I would send, it's called a cumulative red line. But only what we're proposing to change and it, and, and if this is new, it would say it's new, either say it's.
It should say it's new.
Or, you know, then you don't have to highlight, because it's all new.
I think it does say, it's new in the public hearing, yeah.
No, but I, but in the document, I agree with her, I, I like to see. For me, like a date.
I didn't.
Need a clearer picture, I agree.
Yeah, and a date even.
Let me just ask, Martha, can you weigh in on this debate?
If this was not in your regulations at all, and I don't think it was, the whole thing is new. The change that you just made was. A change to a draft that no one has seen, so. Ordinarily, I would say show changes, things that have been removed. This isn't currently in your regulations, so. Um, I don't think you do need to show.
Right, so it's a proposed section of twenty twenty one.
Yeah, that, that we should do, that's all I meant, I, I didn't realize if this was entirely new.
Right, and maybe, I, like, I often do this and I'll write as of in the date.
Does anybody?
Because that really helps you, like.
Okay, so we put proposed new section.
Yes. And people know it's not a change and that it's new, they'll know to read the whole thing.
Yep, that makes sense.
Great, because other stuff that we're putting, it's just one change or two, right?
Yeah.
That, okay, are those gonna be redlined on the website?
Um.
That is, I, I.
Change to the definitions and stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, some of them didn't even exist yet, but.
So again.
Some are modified and some are existing.
So, but, so what redline does is, is it, it shows everything that's added. Like this document, we, I understand, there's nothing to show redline, because it's all, actually, you would redline the whole thing. But if there's a package, say, these are changes that we're proposing. The package would have everything new is underlined and in red as, you know, Word would do automatically. And everything changed would be shown, so people. Only look at what's changed or what's new. Um, not, the, the, first of all, save some time, second of all, gets them right to the changes. Also saves us from them commenting on stuff. They didn't even realize was in there to begin with, and it's just not relevant to this meeting, because we're not making those changes right now. So I guess the whole, it should be like a package that is just redlined. You know what I mean? I, I'm, I'm happy to help create it.
Yeah, I'm just saying to go back and do that, and all the stuff we've already done and all the motions we've already made, do we really want to do that? Right now, the part, the things that go to the village trustees that they read will have all the red lines in it. But the things that are on the website for the public, I just don't think that's appropriate, to have all those red lines on it and red lined.
And you, can you say why not? Cause I.
Because I don't think it looks professional, and I don't think it looks, I don't think they should be, I just don't think it looks professional.
So you're saying it should be a final draft?
Yeah, it's a final draft, or this is what we're proposing, here's the final draft.
But then people don't know what you're changing unless they take out another doc, so if I.
No, they're reading on the website, they can look at the old village zoning and they can compare if they want to.
So they take hundreds of pages.
Yeah, I just, we do all of the documents, Andy now, we just, we do all of them, except for this one.
But again, when you say redo, it exists right now. Right, in a Word format somewhere, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, well, well, forget even that, we're redlining it for the village trustees, why wouldn't we do that for the public? And I hear you say, why don't you just have a clean version and a marked version, that is professionally, when you, if you go to a board and say. Uh, in a corporation and you have a board meeting, you know, and you say, we want to make these changes. You know, you would, well, just like you're gonna do with the village trustee, I guess I just don't understand why we wouldn't offer that. I mean, we want the public to be informed.
Right.
Why make it harder for them? If we're asking someone to take a document, two clean documents, one's a hundred pages, one is five. And you figure out what's different, it just doesn't, it's not very public friendly and I, I, I think it behooves us. To be public friendly.
Yeah, I guess I just, just agree that, I think the public stuff should look more professional, I think the stuff that goes to the village trustees should show changes. That's how, just how I feel about it.
I feel the red lines would be more professional, it would be transparent, it would show, this is what was, this is what is now proposed. And it draws a clearer picture as to what we're doing here, I think even for us. And I remember when Jason had the document, that was all being done in real time. You know, when Jason was at the document and everything was going through and we were, it was being redlined as we go. Or they were supposed out in the, out in the margins. You know, as to what changes were.
But that didn't go on the website, that went to the select board of the village trustees, that was for them, that wasn't for the website.
Sure, I, but just because it's.
Either or, it's still all public, it's still public information, so. Wherever it lives, well, I mean, we just make it more available. And I, I don't see why it wouldn't be available to the public myself either, so.
You can have a clean and a marked version.
Yeah. Just don't want to do it all over again.
Aren't you going to do it for the trustees?
Yeah, I've, I've sent them there and now I have to send them the corrected ones.
Right, but can you just send that to whoever puts it on the website? The exact same version? You don't have to redo it, just send them what you're sending to the trustees.
Looking ones, but I'm saying when we send them the whole changes to all of the village zoning, we're gonna have all those red lines in there for them.
Right.
But this is some, this is, you know, we had our public hearing, we got the public input. We got their ideas about this stuff and now we're saying, here's what we've agreed on. And here's the final copy, so what we'd agree on, do you guys agree or not? That's why I feel where we're at, we wanted to look professional. But I can see what Andy's saying, and I think that's a good thing to, to do in the future, to put both on there, the red lines and the. But a lot of the stuff we're doing here is brand new, the employee housing stuff is new, a few of the definitions are, are changed, but.
And so.
This whole thing is new.
So, so that it doesn't sound like there's a lot that we're changing, so it sounds like it could be easy, I, I guess, I mean.
I see us going back into the village RC and coming up with a document that has the rooming and boarding house in red and revoting on that. And I see us going back into the definitions and.
I don't understand, why are we revoting?
The new ones?
No, why are we, so, why are we revoting? We're not revoting on anything.
Well, we're revoting on what we're sending them, because we just agreed on what we're sending them for the definitions and what we're sending them for employee housing.
It's just the format of the document. It's not the contents of the document, it's just the format of.
Yeah, but we didn't agree to send the changes with the definitions, we didn't agree to do that, we have to redo that whole thing.
We didn't agree with whom for whom?
We didn't agree with ourselves to send it with all the corrections.
To send to whom?
To send to the website and the village trustees.
But it sounds like you already are gonna be sending it to the village trustees.
Saying at the end of the whole grant, we're gonna send all the changes in red to them, we're not gonna send them to the public.
Which again, seems to be more important than the village trustees. I mean, obviously, they have, have to vote on it.
I think you're a little bit more invested in those changes, Andy, and you understand them. Rather than the average citizen of Ludlow.
I, with all due respect, I think we're not respecting the, the, the average citizen of Ludlow, but we have to, people.
Hillary, you wanted this thing?
Haley, um.
Haley, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, you were waiting for that, I was gonna say, a lot of local towns put the red lines on the website and. It's really helpful, especially if you are developing or something, you're able to see what the changes are, how they're affecting you, it, it's very helpful to have red lines. You're not sifting through hundreds of pages trying to figure out, what did they need?
Well, yeah, and also Eric, um, Alan Isaacson, when he was on this board, he would send them just the changes. A sheet with just the changes, he called it an executive review or something. And he would just send a, a sheet of the changes and not the whole document.
I think the whole document is really helpful to see where it all fits, how it lays.
They personally need it.
I'm the same, look at Abunning Towns and Cheryl's red lines.
Eric, what's your comment?
Uh, just as an alternate to, to that. You know, a lot of times when you change it, that you simply put the change from to. Like you may not have to list the whole entire red line document on there, they say, this is what we're changing and from. This is what we're changing and to, it's a proposed change.
That actually requires more work. Versus.
That's a cutting base.
Jared?
Um, so, the key word here is changes, so changing, changes that are, um, with things that are already enacted and implemented. In, in publicly, not. A new section that we haven't even worked out yet. Might be, so all we did was just take the next letter and integrate it into the previous letter. And then, and, and so really, you, you would have never known about it if she didn't start talking about that.
That's the point, that's exactly why we need a red line.
This is new, this is totally, the public doesn't even know about.
Okay, so, uh, let me rephrase again, if it's new. You, I'm suggesting we mark it one of two ways, if something is totally new. You either show it all redlined, because it's just all redlined and red, hence calling it redline, right? Or you just write at the top, this is new, but for, when we said D and E. Yes, people should see that, you're right, it's exactly for that very reason that me, me sitting here on the commission. Didn't exactly remember what we're doing, but I would know if it's redlined, oh, that's what we did.
Okay, so as we work out this new section, there's gonna be tons of red lines.
Yeah.
As we.
Yeah, okay, absolutely. But I'm talking about, yeah, if we're sending it to the village trust, so. As a citizen, my biggest beef with the town and the village is the lack of transparency. And I think this is us not being transparent enough and making it easier. For our citizens to actually see what we're doing. And yes, it's not gonna come with every explanation of why, but it's gonna make, people will read it more if it's easier. If you just send them stuff and they don't know what's new or what's not, they're less likely to read it and they're more likely to get annoyed. Trying to be citizen friendly here, I think it's our responsibility to do that. And I think that that's the very professional way that things occur, is, that's how they do it in legislatures, so it's very professional.
It's too complicated.
Well, but, but, but again, why? Why?
I tell them that there was a section here, they don't even know what it is. And then once that's said, there was a section in here that they don't have any reference to or they can't even find.
I, I, I just want to make sure that we understand what I'm saying to redline to.
Yes.
What exists today as the law of the land for our village and town?
Right.
Right, versus what we're proposing, isn't that what we're changing? I'm not suggesting anything that we're not sending somewhere for approval. I'm suggesting what has changed in our zoning book, you have the zoning book. Um, I'm, you know, what's changed from that? Isn't that what the village trustees are gonna get redlined? So, that's all I'm suggesting, so maybe I'm not understanding the question, that's what a red line is.
They'll just see rooming and boarding house under permitted uses, they don't see all the other changes. That are here until it comes time to see these.
Yes.
Yeah. And that's, that's.
Right, they'll, exactly, they'll see only the change. We are currently proposing.
In this.
And then next time, when we propose the next change, it'll, won't show what has been changed. It'll, yeah, it's a, it's a.
Also, in this warning, it specifically says, article seven, article five, exactly what the change is. You know, it's listed in this public warning and it's listed in the website under their, the report we sent them. The exact changes that we made, yeah, to each section.
To incorporate new and modified definitions in article seven does not state what the definition is and what changed.
Yeah, but we sent, you sent that paperwork along, so you want us to take the old definition and put it above the new definition?
I don't know, what section are we talking about right now?
Talking about definitions that are we revised and not new definitions.
Yes, you should have the old.
Everyone, everybody, everybody agree to that? That they want the old definition next to the new definition?
I would, that's one way of doing it, yes.
Yep.
So, we don't have to go back and change all our motions, right?
No, I, I don't know.
Much simpler than. So Jared, we can do that, right? We can just, you and I can work together on that and get the, okay.
We need a coherent recording of what we've changed.
Okay, just the changes, not the new stuff, please, not the new stuff.
If it says new, which it needs to say.
It just. Seeing, what does employee housing say new? No.
Yeah, so, and it just.
So then it should indicate somewhere on the website, this is proposed and new.
Okay, so I'm going to go back in the employee housing one and add new. To the top of it.
Warn, warn is a new section.
Yeah, so to propose new section, new, you can even say in its entirety. And people know everything's new, no words have changed, it's a new section in its entirety. I'm sorry if my lawyer is coming out at this meeting.
No, it's a mess of the public, okay, so proposed.
And, and also just to my understanding, this document shall, should already exist. Right?
Not in public forum.
Well, I'm so sure, but, but I mean, as far as like, the, the work behind this, this, this document should already existed, we're just. Deciding whether or not we're gonna put on the website or not, this doesn't, shouldn't have to be like recreated. At this point, right?
Pretty document, some are new and some are.
So the red line document that's gonna be presented to the village trustees, that, that exists in its entirety up to the meeting prior to this one today.
Yes.
Correct, okay, so that's great, so, because otherwise.
Regional, that exists at regional.
Right.
And all the changes in red.
And to be honest, I need that, because I have the old one and when we do section by section. Um, I've lost a contiguous. Document, and when we're talking about a new section and it refers to a definition that we did three, three months before. I've lost, I'm, I'm starting to. I don't want to say lose my way, but actually lose my way. It's becoming harder without a living.
I'm also doing that because.
Right, but that's, so we, how do we help you?
Trying to figure out which one's new and which one's old.
Well.
Working with my old version of Word here.
So, I mean, we need help as a committee for this document to live. So, um. It, it, you know, um, you need more help. It shouldn't be on you. Now, don't we have a.
Whenever I feel like I, you know, Martha will alert me till I have the wrong version. She sends around the right one and I just get rid of all the old ones.
Yeah, but well.
There shouldn't even be a right, like a right version and a wrong version. There's just the version. There's just right, like.
Right. It's just that.
It's too many different.
Yeah, it's too many for copies.
But that's the point. If you're the chairperson and you're not sure what the right version is, that means that's gonna impact our work and we're, you're human, we're human, we all, we need.
Very grateful to regional. They always clarify.
But, but, well, but so if something gets sent out, we start reading the wrong one or we have, you know, it'll happen every once in a while. But it's, it's happening more than it should. And I think it's because we're not maintaining. Um, and we should get the towns' help, the villages' help from this, the zoning department, whoever is helping us.
Exactly.
To help us do this.
Yep.
Um, it, it's, it's, we need it as a committee.
Okay.
I think we should have an internal. Um. An, an internal living document that is the interim so that when we're looking at new things, we can look back and not. Have to look back three months, look at notes, look at a definition, look at notes. I think that will help you a great deal.
Yeah.
And that, and, and then helps the village and the town.
Okay, so let's get back on track with these conversions and changes of use. To say, are we okay with this document? Going to the village trustees as is? As a new proposed document?
With the exclusion of E.
No, not excluding E.
Not excluding.
With the change in, the change of E that you have right in your packet.
Okay.
Doesn't refer to a section that doesn't exist. And the modification of D explaining that it still has to be approved by the DRB here.
So what was F becomes E?
Yes.
See. And, and just to be clear, and I'm sorry, so this F and E is something we looked at in the interim. For a new section.
Yes.
So yes, I agree, that does not get redlined. It would help for us to be redlined for a meeting.
Definitely.
You know, for now on, you know, but, but I agree, no, that does not go in. Only what's from the old to the new, not the sausage making in between.
Right.
Great.
Yeah, the sausage is gross.
It's a necessity and we're.
So, how are people with this convergence of changes of use? Are we ready to move on it?
Yes. Make a motion. Do it. And make a motion that we propose five twenty point one four. Um, as, as detailed in front of us. In our package. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Brian, you get a weigh-in here?
No, I'm, I'm just. I don't know. I'm just trying to just distinguish what this does, I guess, is, is what I'm trying to figure, but.
Well, it's really, the whole idea of it in the beginning was that, like, for instance. Um, is it Valente's? I know the DRB was looking at, I think it was Valente's, when they wanted to. And that's not a good example. Maybe it's the, um, like the exercise place over there. When they went from a pizza place to whatever they were before and then they went to a gym, they had a really hard time doing that conversion because we didn't have language. All the language to do a conversion like that. They had to have a certain amount of parking and it would have restricted business not to have this document.
Okay.
It restricts business in town not to have this document because people can't easily change their use without going through. You know, low and high water to, to do that. So this is supposed to make it easier and keep the village a vibrant place. Where businesses can change more easily.
All right.
You know? That's where it came from.
I vote yes.
Okay. All right, next. That was a lot. We did a lot there. Planning for the village trustees, July public hearing. Sounds like there's gonna be three or more of us there. Just wanted to talk about what that looks like. How's our time? Hey, we're not there. Oh, no, because it's eight. Five o'clock. Yeah. We got five minutes. Okay, planning for village trustees, July public hearing. Do you think we need to do any sort of formal planning? Last time was Brian and you and I kinda went by the seat of our pants.
Sure, I mean, just as far as a presentation.
Presentation?
Sure. Exact, and we're presenting exactly what?
What we just went through.
Everything we just went through?
Yeah.
Sure. I mean.
Okay, so whoever's here, I'm gonna ask you to jump in and take certain sections if you want to.
Sure.
You know, just let me know, if you wanna explain a section. At that hearing. We'll take a public input on that. Hey, next month, agenda plan, oh wait, sorry.
Can we get a copy of what's going to the trustees before the meeting?
Yes, yeah. Sharon and I gotta work on putting the old stuff with the new stuff, but we'll.
Right.
We'll get that.
That would be helpful, right? What's red? Yeah.
Yeah.
That, no, I'd like to read through it. I'm sorry, yeah.
Now that you say all that, it would be really nice for me to see that too. So it's.
Yeah.
And so many different things have changed since we started that. That process, I'm thinking of definitions. I mean, the end definition is way, way better, obviously, than it was.
Right, that'll, that'll help us present it.
Yes, it will help us. And we can, you know, explain why that changed, how it happened. Um, so next month's agenda planning, July, what we have on deck for that. Is, um. Streamlining the permitting process. And Martha, ahead of time, I'll meet with Martha and Allison and we'll get you that. Um, chart that Martha came up with that. Shows you all the different districts and what are all the permitted uses and all the conditional uses and. We added a section on administrative review in between those two sections.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we'll present all that stuff next time and. We'll all make decisions about, you know, moving things around if we want to. And we'll need to, in some cases.
Including.
So, yeah.
Including new stuff from S one hundred.
Right, including new stuff from S one hundred, because.
So it's possible that my comment that I'm gonna ask that I started with before, which didn't come up, might impact the next agenda. Yeah, so, um, so maybe I'll bring it up now and you can tell me if it's just a comment or it belongs in this section.
Okay.
Um, um, last meeting, it was determined that, um, the alternate. Could also vote when there is an even amount of board members. And I know you represented what I, I had sent to you privately, a, a, apart, because I wasn't gonna be here. But I, I wanna clarify what I meant by it, by giving too much power. Um. If, if there are four of us who have been here all the time and there's a stalemate, which I've never experienced with us yet, but there will be. Chances are, it's rather controversial and probably. Is better off tabled and that being the vote. Right? And more discussion rather than having someone who's not been part of all these discussions. Um, suddenly have this tie-baking power. I don't, it's not the person, it's the, it's the position that I'm referring to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, I think that, you know, when you think of alternates, the, the, the alternate, for lack of a quorum. If we don't have a quorum, we can't function and meet. Um, I don't believe that it was, it's, that alternates are intended to break tiebreakers also. That's a very different role. Than what a normal alternate is and saying versus not having a quorum and not meeting at all. And I think we function, I think to have. You know, an even vote means that we should continue to resolve this amongst ourselves.
Yeah, I agree with you. We, we haven't good at that though, but I agree with Mike.
Yes.
Judy, what you wanna?
If there's a tie, the motion fails. Well.
It doesn't get tabled.
Well, but, but, but the alternate is going to then make it and then.
But I just wanted to clarify.
But it changes that dynamic. I'm sorry, I meant tabled, it fails.
What's the language we have on that? Trying to look, look back at that, our alternate language.
Uh, these last meetings. News minutes. That's okay.
Fine, oh, we'll do it in our.
It's, yes, man, so it was done in a normal meeting.
In May.
It was a alternate, there's a lot.
Doesn't think they should vote, but here's, I believe, a number.
Yeah, that was actually.
Item seven.
Yeah, and that second bullet is shortened for, this was Terry speaking for me. Um. So it just, just, I don't know what that means, but. Um. But the, but this is now clarifying why it's too much power. And I think that we're better off. Coming up with a proposal that the boards can, you know, tie-break on its own or. You know? Can I recognize Eric or, or Cherry, is I require you?
What?
I recognize Eric.
Oh, Eric, what do you got for us?
My understanding on the alternate position is you wouldn't. You wouldn't bring an alternate in for any votes, then only for a votes. An alternate, if called by the chair, will participate in all the discussion. And then has to participate in the vote after the discussion, but you wouldn't bring in an alternate just to tie-break a vote.
Yeah, that's not.
And I understand that that's not what it said, but that's not what the discussion was. The, well, I agree with you and fill in for it goes unable to participate in the proposal, um. New proposal, also we should, to fill in for a regular member. I don't even think that's the correct proposed language. Or, or maybe.
I'm trying to make this work.
I'm, I'm sorry, say it again?
This, this is, situations like this is why historically an alternate has not been part of a planning board.
And it, and it was not our choice.
This is why.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
Allison, at that meeting, Allison found the state statute that there, that's not, it's not true that you can't have an alternate.
That's all I just said.
No, it's historically why there's not.
Exactly why there hasn't been.
But I mean, even, so I, I guess even with this new proposal, no, I couldn't vote on this because I wasn't here, but if this is. Is this what was voted on that just for any member who's unable to participate? And then he says an alternate will be activated? First of all, that's a shall. I don't think we want that. I thought it was. That it was, um, an alternate will be activated. Or can be activated, either can or will when there's not a quorum. I, I know that was, and then there was additional language about the vote. I don't remember. This, I, I, maybe I'm misremembering.
Is this in May?
Yeah. And you, you know what it is, is I had that same problem. It's because the hearing's first, so you gotta. Yeah, so it's the same.
In the last page.
Exact same thing.
Third to last page.
It says business from the previous meeting. Item number seven. You're getting closer.
Okay, so we adjourned that. Now I get it. Okay.
Okay, look at business from the previous meeting.
We've had a lot of discussion about that.
I mean, this ended up. Rather.
Well, now it's a vote activated by the chair or vice chair.
See.
Or regular member.
It says alternate doesn't think they should vote if there is an. No, no, that, that, that is.
Too much.
That was, that was.
It doesn't say, it always says.
It's not that the alternate didn't say that. I mean, it's a summary, but, um, Terry spoke about what I felt. That you don't have that about what I thought about it. Not, that's just discussion, but then look at the new proposed language, it's very open. So if we only have four, you can. Anytime somebody doesn't, you can bring them in. This also doesn't say anything.
But it also says that the discretion of the chair or the vice chair, so I guess you're relying on them to.
See, right, where it says language for the alternate, they will be contacted if there's a lack of a quorum. That was my understanding. But even one person is missing and they are contacted, you don't need to activate your alternate. The chair and the vice chair have the decision power to when, when or not to activate the alternate. So that. I know what this is. My understanding was Terry or you, vice chair. Have the discretion to notify the alternate if you need them.
Yeah, or not.
Or not. And, and my understanding was it would be based on whether we needed a quorum because you can't meet if you don't have a quorum.
Right.
So I think we have to combine this with whatever that the agenda was that had the exact language to figure out what actually got approved.
Well, it says proposed language.
Well. And that's what we approved.
That's what we approved.
And also you did, so by the chair or vice chair to fill in for a regular member. Who is unable to participate in a meeting at the discretion of the chair or the vice chair. So, so that means if, if they know or have a reasonable.
That we will have no quorum at all.
That we will not have a quorum.
It will be called in.
Also means that if, you know, there is a quorum, they can still be activated by the discretion.
Is that, is that what you guys want?
The chair.
I think that's probably where I, why I reacted to the even number, because then you guys discussed alls about an even number.
Yeah, but we didn't put that in the language.
I mean, you gotta kind of read through it to see the red. About, you know, where you. Oh, I, I watched it on, okay, I watched it online.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Um, I came away with, you know what? Maybe I'll re-watch it.
Yeah. And we can't act on it anyway right now because it wasn't warned.
Right. No, that's why I'm saying.
Watch it and I'll warn it for the next meeting.
That's why I'm suggesting, that's why it might have belonged.
I don't think we're gonna finish our rules and procedures till two thousand twenty-four, but it's okay because we'll have them perfect by then. We keep having to go back to that.
That's what happens when you get thrown a surprise.
Surprise!
Surprise, you have an.
Hey, are there any citizen comments? Eric, all of them.
I started my usual thing. This, the planning board is the most important board in any town.
That swells our heads every time, though.
It's, it's not. Um, you guys need the tools to operate.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I brought this up to select board here probably six months ago.
Yeah.
If the chair is working with a laptop from nineteen eighty-four.
Yeah, it's so bad.
The town should be supplying you with a laptop that could be.
I just put a new version of Word. It's not that old of a computer. It's just an old version of Word.
The town should be supplying, should be.
Yeah, you should.
At this meeting, I said, if they don't want to supply it, I'll donate one to the town. They get mad at me for saying that because I embarrassed them, but. You guys should put pressure on the manager, the select board.
I mean, this is so bad. Jared sends, Jared sends me a document and I'm saying, oh no, you gotta make all these corrections. He's like, it's right on mine. Like the numbers don't. I asked the town manager, I asked the select board.
But that, that was.
That's, that's why I like the idea of a living document that everybody.
Right, that too, that too. But I, I hear, hear on what Eric said. I also offered my, I'm sorry, go ahead. You understand. Here's the thing. Now we have Jared. He's at our meetings, but doesn't he have a computer and he can be recording the changes as we run through the meeting?
He's not required to be here every single time though.
So we could pay him. He doesn't get paid much. He should get paid to attend the.
But I don't know how you would want me to record them. I'm not as. Person.
No, I don't mean like minutes. I mean like the document as we go through it, the changes to the document.
Cause I'm indifferent to who does it, but as fact that it's on a singular computer, which is town property, which.
Yeah.
It very loosely leaves the building. I'd say, I was always our team viewer, it sits on a desk and is on and anyone can remote in to edit, you know, do stuff, but. Um, I, I, I think it's dangerous for you, Terry, the fact that it's on your personal.
Well, the thing that I don't feel bad about is that I know Martha and Allison both have versions with all the red lines that they're keeping very current for us, so.
Sure, and, and I prefer that we just work off those continuously.
Yes, uh, yeah, I guess so. It's every single time.
Brian's point, I as a member of the public can forward a request to your computer. Yep, and look at all your emails. Being used in your public duties. Yep, exactly. Ask to see what's on there, you have to provide it.
Something embarrassing on here.
It doesn't matter. Your computer will still be gone until the subpoenas. Um, that's the same reason, well, not my profession, we use none of our personal equipment, personal phones for photography.
Yeah, I hear you. It doesn't make sense, especially in two thousand twenty.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna do that other weekend.
No, it's fine. It's in the minutes now, Eric.
It could be done.
Okay, um, it is eight ten and I'll take a, be under a motion to adjourn if anyone would so gather.
I would love to make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
Yep.